So, it is now 2:04. Today's Wednesday, April 24th. We are in the formal boardroom for this Lynn County Board of Supervisors meeting. The first item of business is public comment. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. And I'll just mention, we'll do public comment after each one of the issues as well. So, seeing no public comment, we will have our first issue, which is a discuss and decide, which means we're gonna discuss the issue and then vote on it at the end, on the request to authorize planning for dam modification at Pennakin Ridge. Who's gonna kick this one off for us? Good afternoon. Please state your first and last name and position and title for the record.
Good afternoon. Dennis Goumae, Executive Director, Lynn County Conservation Board. Staff would like to begin the discovery process for modifying the dam at Pennakin Ridge Park. As you know, Pennakin Ridge Park is a 966 acre park along the Waspsupinican River. The dam was built in 1967 to impound water for the purposes of recreation as part of the park. At the time of the construction, the dam had an anticipated lifespan of 50 years. We're now at 52 years. The Conservation Board also recently undertook a project to modify the dam at Buffalo Creek Park. That project has been completed and has been very successful. So, we're asking for $150,000 to start the discovery phase of modifying the dam at Pennakin Ridge. This would involve hiring a consultant and starting public input meetings to gather information and then ultimately develop options for consideration for those modifications. While we're asking for $150,000 to start the discovery process, we believe that the budget for this project will be somewhere around a million dollars, depending on the actual option that's selected at the end of the discovery. So, we're asking for approval to start the discovery process, which involves hiring an engineer, anticipated cost $150,000. Do you have any questions?
Do we have any questions from any of our board members about this?
So, I know we talked earlier, but you were saying that you want to keep the level of the lake the same, right? Like, that's what you're hoping to do, but you might not actually end up with a plan that will do that?
Correct. The park was built around this lake, and so over the past 50 years, all the developments have taken the lake into account. And so, we have a number of recreational activities that take place at the lake or at the park that wouldn't be possible if that lake were to be lowered. So, I think that it's going to require that that pool level stay the same, but that is part of the discovery, so that we hope that the engineer looks at other options that we maybe haven't thought about.
Okay. And what would be some of the cultural and environmental impacts of getting rid of the dam? And if I understand correctly from what we talked about earlier, when you wanted to do like a step formation, right? So, that the drop would not be as severe on the dam? So, if you did do that, what would be some of the environmental benefits as well as cultural drawbacks of that?
From the environmental side, it reconnects the river with itself so that it allows life to move up and down the stream. Primarily fish, but other organisms as well are able to move up and downstream freely, whereas today with the dam, they cannot do that. Part of the discovery is to answer the questions about the historic and archaeological impacts and cultural. So, that part of that process will be hiring archaeologists and other specialists that come in and do the discovery part of that phase of the project.
Do you know how it's gonna affect the surrounding communities who like grew up with this? And like their whole lifestyles like based around it? So, like how are you gonna deal with what they have to say? Because a lot of them are gonna be like opposed to it, I feel like? Because like their whole life, they've known of it, so...
We've actually held one public meeting already, just to understand how people use the river and what's important to them. When we get started with, when we hire an engineer to start this process, one of the first steps will be to have an open house to invite people back in to again hear their concerns and try to incorporate as many of their concerns and ideas into the final product as we can. So, an important piece will be allowing people to comment on the project and what their concerns are.
I have a question about the money right here you mentioning about $150,000. How did you come up with that budget, like? Because you said it might cost between $150,000 to a million dollar. Is that like something you're sure about, you plan, or just some kind of amount you're just coming up with?
It's an estimate based on past experience. The modification at Buffalo Creek Park, which has been completed now, had about $150,000 design budget, and we were able to stay within that. So, we think this is likely to be okay for this one as well.
So, what you're trying to say is say like it's gonna be the same as the other one? Like, because like based on like the time the dam was built up to right now, I think the price of materials kind of went up and down, so how do you deal with that?
The discovery phase to hire the engineer and get a consultant onboard, I think that will stay the same as it was for Buffalo Creek. The final product, how much it costs to actually implement the project, could go up or down from that million dollars that I estimated. So, you're right. If we select a different option at the end of the planning process that's more expensive, that budget could go up.
I have two questions. So, one, is the a million dollars for the actual construction you plan on for the dam modification, is that, would you say that's higher or lower than what you think it will actually be?
I think that's pretty close to what it will be. Again, based on Buffalo Creek, it was a smaller dam to start with, so a smaller project, and it was about $700,000. So, I've added a few hundred thousand to that, and I think it'll be pretty close to that million dollar price tag.
And also, are you planning, how are you planning on funding this? Is this a local option, sales tax, or is it, are we asking for a grant right now?
Sure. So, part of the budget will be developed after we know which project we're looking at. Local dollars, it could be local option, sales tax, it could be through capital fund, capital projects, funding. We do have two grant opportunities that are likely. One is a state dam mitigation grant fund, and the other's a Fish and Wildlife Service grant fund. We anticipate applying for both of those, and a portion of the cost would come from those two grant programs.
Could there be a scenario where if we approve this request and you come into receipt of additional funds from those grants that you mentioned that you probably have a good chance of receiving, would there be a way to reimburse the funds if we use taxpayer dollars now? Or how would that work? Or would you use those to further the project along?
Yes. There are both planning dollars available as well as implementation dollars available for both of those projects. So, that could reduce the county's obligation.
Okay. So, there could be a reimbursement along. So, you're asking for 150K right now out of our general fund so that we can start the exploration of this project with the idea that additional funding is likely on the way?
Correct.
Okay. Correct. Are there any other questions?
Yeah. Sorry about that. I'm, okay. You said in our meeting a while back that the dam is, there are currently no visual signs of deterioration for the dam, correct?
Correct.
What, in your best estimate, if we did absolutely nothing, how long could the dam potentially last with the rate it's currently going? The deterioration rate?
I'd really hate to speculate on that. I would prefer that if that's the route that you prefer to go, that we would hire an engineer to give that evaluation. I don't feel qualified to guess on how long the dam may last.
And he already said that from the beginning, they estimated that it was gonna last 50 years, and it's been 53 years. I don't think it's safe.
52, I believe.
52 years, yeah. So, I think it's nearing its end now.
I'm mainly wondering how quick this needs to be.
It's a great question. I just, I wish I knew, but I'm not being an engineer. I have a hard time guessing at that.
So, we're clear. This is an initiative from the state of Iowa at the State House?
This is a request from the Conservation Board to start the exploration, but there is a statewide program and a statewide effort to remove low-head dams across the state.
So, it's encouraged?
Correct.
And then, are you looking to make this a long-term fix? The last time you said the dam lasted for 50 years. Are you looking for this to last longer than 50 years, to make it like a longer than last time, or?
We want at least a 50-year solution, but ideally, what we come up with would be permanent. And that's usually accomplished with the use of large rocks and stabilizing the structure below, so that it becomes a permanent solution.
My other question is like, when you came up with this kind of plan, do you also involve the local people right there? Like, try to talk to them, show like your design or platform, how you're gonna make everything? Like, what's their response when you show it to them, like when you come up with the idea?
I think the process that we had at Buffalo Creek was really good. We had an initial meeting with stakeholders. We invited the public in. They told us what their concerns were. We came up with three options. The engineer came up with three options to consider. Went back to another public meeting. What do you like, what don't you like about these options? Went back, came up with a final design, and then again presented that to the public. So, while not everyone agreed with the final product, I think we got a lot of support because we tried to implement as many ideas as we could.
Okay. So, if there are no further questions, because I know we've got a pretty full agenda, I'd like to put the question for a vote, and we'll do a roll call vote for this one. So, someone, either Barb or Britt, can help us with that. So, I just want to make sure I have the question exact. This is a request coming from our Conservation... I'm sorry about that. Thank you. Well, we'll do it this way. This is a request to authorize planning for dam modification at Pennakin Ridge. So, I'm gonna move that we, move so that we can continue discussion, and I would just ask for a second.
Second.
Okay. And before we vote on it, is there anybody that wants to provide any public comment here? So, we got one. Anybody else? Just raise your hand so I know how many we got coming. Okay, we at least have one. All right. Just state your name for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Bert Dahmer, and I live at 1 Beakler Bridge Road. And I'm pretty upset about this. Mr. Goumae said that there's been a chance for public comment, and that the Conservation Department has been listening, but I don't think that they've been listening. That dam is really important to us. For generations, I've taken my kids and my grandchildren to fish at that dam. We spend an awful lot of time there. It is a great fishing opportunity, and why do you want to take that away from us, Mr. Walker? Why do you want to take those precious memories away from us? You said it's been there 52 years. It's gonna last a lot longer. Now, I spent my career in construction. I'm out there frequently, and I can tell by looking at that dam that it's got a lot more years in it. Spend a million dollars on that, on that dam. If you ask me, you're a bunch of dam fools.
Just remind the board that we do not respond directly to public comment and that we ask that all of the public comments that are given today be addressed to the Chair of the Board. Are there any more public comments? Okay. No more public comments. I'm gonna call for a vote, and we will do a roll call vote. Britt, you can help us out with that. So, all in favor of authorizing planning for dam modification at Pennakin Ridge to the tune of $150,000, we'll call for a roll call vote. Britt?
Thank you, Walker.
Aye.
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 Wow, unanimous. Okay. So, that's unanimous, newly approved. Congratulations, Dennis. And just as a reminder to our newly elected supervisors, if you do not agree with the roll call vote, you're free to say nay. The next item on the agenda, discuss and decide on special use permit for Green Acres Faith-Based Addiction Recovery Facility.
Good afternoon. My name is Les Beck, Planning and Development Director. And this is a request for a special use permit for a faith-based addiction recovery facility. The applicants are Oliver and Lisa Douglas, and the Board of Supervisors has final authority to either approve or deny the special use permit. The proposal is to convert an existing 10-acre, it's a former farmstead site. It has the original farmhouse, and it has two original barns on it. Their proposal is to construct two new bunk houses that would house 10 men each for a total of 20 maximum residents going through the treatment facility. They would also remodel the house into three units. The Douglasses would live on the main floor. They would convert the upper floor into two apartment units for their resident staff. So, there would be three full-time resident staff at the facility 24 hours a day, seven days a week. All residents will be voluntary participants, so there will be no court-ordered commitments for treatment. A typical day in their treatment program is very structured. Their program calls for a wake-up call at 6:00 a.m., lights out at 10:00 p.m., and then every waking moment in between is accounted for. It may be in individual or group counseling. It may be in skill development in their workshop. It may be in some outreach programs into the neighborhood, but their waking moments will be accounted for throughout their days. Part of their treatment program will include a community garden, so they will tend a large garden. They are proposing a roadside stand, at which they will sell seasonal produce that will help fund the treatment program. One of the barns will be converted to a workshop for either woodworking or metalworking, but again, skills development as part of their treatment program. The other barn will be used as part of the community gardening program. They will hold community days where they will invite the neighborhood over to the garden to join in, either in harvest or planting celebrations. As I mentioned, they will be doing community outreach into the neighborhood, so if there are any homes in the neighborhood that need general house maintenance or general lawn maintenance, they will make their services available to help residents with those. Security measures will be put in place. There will be security cameras on site, but there will not be security fencing. There will not be security officers on site. If someone leaves the premises without permission, they are automatically removed from the program. The neighborhood itself, there are over two dozen houses in the neighborhood. There's a small neighborhood park, as you can see, immediately adjacent to this property. It has children's playground equipment on the park. The neighborhood is in transition. It's a mix of young families with children and longtime older residents who have lived in the neighborhood for 30 years or more. So, the proposal in front of you is for, again, a faith-based drug and alcohol addiction treatment facility. And do you have any questions of staff at this point?
You said in the earlier meeting that they required the people coming into the program to be already out of the detox stage, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Is there still any limitations to their access to the community in the first month or so of the program?
There is. Their access anywhere off of the property is governed by the treatment program itself. So, any outreach into the neighborhood will be supervised, and it will be programmed into their treatment program.
You said that there are 20 members of the facility, and then there'll be, how many staff? Three staff?
Well, the Douglasses, husband and wife, so there's two. And then, there's two apartments upstairs, and so there would be at least two more. And I don't, you know, whether they're a couple or a family, you know, as part of the treatment staff or not, but there will be three additional units, or three total units in the house and a maximum of 20 residents undergoing treatment.
I think that if we're like having supervised outreach into the community, just having four or possibly five supervisors supervising 20 members of the facility is a little bit of a risk for safety, even if they are already detoxing in the program and they've already committed to being in this program. I think it's a risk to the community, and could that be changed somehow?
And just so you know, as part of their program, the outreach, the numbers of residents that would be released, so to speak, we doing outreach into the community would be limited. So, it wouldn't be all 20 at one time. It would be limited.
Going off of that, it says here that it's gonna be right across from a small neighborhood park.
Yes, ma'am.
So, how are you gonna ensure public safety? Because a lot of parents might feel as if their kids are not safe, and it's gonna like lower the security of the neighborhood. And a lot of people might actually move out to move to safer neighborhoods because they're gonna think these people are a threat. So, how are you gonna like prevent that from happening?
So, I cannot prevent that from happening. I cannot ensure the public safety. What I can tell you is that the residents will be supervised, their days will be structured. And again, if anybody leaves the site without permission, they will be out of the program.
Oh, sorry. Can I go, or do you wanna go? Okay. I have a question about, so, the neighbors in the area might have a perceived level of a threat that these recovering addicts have, but do you have any information that could support or deny, like, the perceived threat versus the actual threat that these people pose?
So, the only thing, the only information we have are we've examined some similar faith-based programs in other areas of the country. And so, we've looked at, you know, the issues, the successes, the issues with those comparable-type programs. And I guess I would, along those lines, I would indicate that security or police calls to these facilities has not been an issue, based on what we've learned.
Okay.
Okay. So, for the 20 selected people, I think you mentioned that it's only Christian-based, like, thing? So, are you only gonna choose, like, is it gonna be an application process, and you're only gonna choose people who are Christian? Or are you gonna be open to more faiths?
I don't choose the residents that undergo treatment. There will be an application process. My understanding is it is not contingent upon being a Christian.
Yeah, but isn't it only limited to 20 people? So, like, what's, how's the application process like?
So, again, all I know is there's an application process. There is a screening process. Selection, I guess, would be up to the owners of the facility.
Are you thinking it's a bit biased if they only...
I'm not saying they do only select those of the Christian faith. All I know is that part of their treatment program is faith-based. They happen to be Christian.
And I would say to that, if they, if someone wasn't Christian and they wanted to be rehabilitated, there were prob, there's probably gonna be other places that they could do that that would be more catered to their specific religion. Like, yeah, anyway. I have another question. Is, what is the community feedback on this proposal?
So, the owners did hold a neighborhood meeting, and there was, there were a number of concerns expressed about security. A lot of the same questions that you were asking were asked at the neighborhood meeting.
My question is like, maybe in a case of emergency, how does, like, employees can handle the situation? Because it doesn't mean, because they are kind of being like a volunteer, it doesn't mean that they cannot be dangerous or harmful to other people. How do you, like, your employees can handle that situation?
So...
Because like you said, there will be no any security right there, no nothing, only the cameras. So, can you explain about that?
Yeah. So, again, the security measures that are proposed are security cameras. Again, there will be no security fencing. This is not an institution. You know, the residents are not, again, they're not committed through court order. They are there on their own volition, and so, so the security really is, I guess...
Yeah. So, my concern is like, even though like they are the one who brought themselves there, what if they get right there, and then they unlock the situation right there? Or maybe thing goes wrong, and then they try to become violent, so like, do the employees right there, they can handle the situation?
I think we talked about in the meeting, to specify, this isn't a detox facility. So, all of the members of this facility have already gone through the detoxification process, and that is a requirement to be brought into the facility. So, I think that also lowers the risk of security because of the fact that they've already been detoxed, and they've already gone through the stage where they could be a potential threat to the community versus in an institution where you have people through all different stages of the recovery process. This is a very specific tailored to those just looking for recovery and a sense of community. And the fact that it is a volunteer process, and they choose to go there, they choose to spend the money to be in this process for a prolonged amount of time in that community and to be working in that. So, I think that that could also lower the chances of dangerous situations.
Is that gonna be free, or you're gonna be like cost? Like, is there gonna be any cost for that, for those to be right there?
There is a fee to participate in the program, yes.
Yeah. So, that's like, so also the other issue is because like, if like, say like, I'm the member of that program, and then again, I charge, how much you gonna charge, like, the question anyway?
I don't know what the tuition rate is.
So, which means if the cost goes high, nobody's gonna be right there. Nobody's gonna come. And then also, the facility's gonna be like used for nothing, so how you...
So, again, I don't know the cost. It's gonna, it's gonna be, you know, that's gonna be based on the business model of the owners. They're gonna have to know kind of what their, you know, what their market is.
Okay. We got a couple more questions?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I have two questions. My first one is, what are the benefits of having this being a much more, okay, I say much more. I know that their day's very structured, but having opportunities to interact with the community and form connections with people, how does that benefit the recovering addicts?
So, this is a debate that, I don't know if it's, if you want me to answer the benefits. I'm not a trained counselor. My perception is that integrating a facility like this into a neighborhood helps in the recovery process and helps the residents integrate then later on, help them integrate back into their own families, their own neighborhoods, their own community. So, not being... So not being a trained treatment professional, that's simply what I have learned over the process of reviewing this case.
Okay, and I actually forgot my other question, so you can go.
Okay. My fellow chairman asked earlier, as this is a faith-based program, on whether they would allow people of other potential religions. My question is if someone, if a gay man, a bisexual man, or transgender man wanted to come into the program, would the owners turn him away?
As a private nonprofit, we don't have any say over that. I have not read, seen, or heard anything to indicate that they would be discriminatory either based on faith, sexual orientation. Okay. So I'd like to call this issue to be decided. We are deciding on whether or not to issue a special use permit for Green Acres Faith-Based Addiction Recovery Facility. So we will do another roll call vote and just to remind. Yes, we need public comment. So just to remind my fellow supervisors, when we call for the vote, you may vote aye or yea or nay, but looks like we'll start with a public comment.
Good afternoon. My name is Thomas Callahan. I'm a recovering alcoholic. I've lived in this neighborhood for over thirty-five years. I've worked in other treatment facilities with other alcoholics and I believe that this treatment program will be a success. Every man will be there voluntarily, which means that they wanna be helped. They're seeking the help. It's faith-based programming. These men will have no idle time because idle hands do the work of the devil. The Douglas's are good people, they're upstanding citizens, and Oliver himself is a recovering alcoholic. He will bring his faith and experience to do good work here for the community. I urge you to vote yes for this wonderful facility so people can get the help that they so desperately need. Thank you.
Thank you. We have another public comment?
Alright, so just with this, I think that this new facility and the idea of it is, it's beneficial to the community. But I think in consideration of building this, there should be a few precautions that are met within the community. One, that the community is in fact educated on what the program is doing so they don't have a false perception of what's going on inside the facility, so they're knowledgeable of that their community is not in harm's way. I also wanna make sure that within the proposal, that the system does run correctly. Because if the system is flawed and if it doesn't run to certain specifications, I do fear that there's a good chance of threat to children, especially because there's a park around and they're so close to the community. And then maybe add a few provisions on staff members as four people managing twenty addicts could be potentially dangerous. And then maybe a test run first, I think would be a great idea. Instead of just dumping twenty people into a facility first, maybe doing a tarrel run with about five to ten. Making sure that the facility is up to date and that it works to the requirements it needs to.
Thank you. We have another public comment?
Alright, my name is Infinity and every time I think about this, I just think about like my uncle. And like, he was an alcoholic a long time ago, like when I was like five. And he was always homeless. My mom used to always ask him, like, ask him like, why do you drink so much? Why don't you just do something with your life? And he go, well, it's nothing to do. And he go, well, and nobody here for me. So he felt very like alone. So I always, I just always think about that. So this, this project can also help with, you know, not feeling alone and helping them improve. So it's just like giving somebody another chance or something to do in life. Also, every time I think about this project, I always think about, it's the same thing as putting somebody in a homeless shelter. It's like homeless people go to homeless shelter. These addicts will go into a home that will help them out. It's to give somebody else another chance. Or just like if you need help in school, with the school's subject, teachers stay out of school to help you. So that's basically what I'm just saying. And then also it's just a social good where we don't have to have somewhere, like, you know, counselors or therapists going out to help those people. If they come here, they can help themselves and find new friends and family. And then I don't really think it's a public safety, because maybe the kids will see something good that going out in a world that we're always being on the street, so, you know, helping out in the garden. Maybe they will learn from that experience to not, to not be in that position. And yeah, that's about it.
Very much.
Hi, my name is Kim Jacobs. I live in this neighborhood. I just moved in two years ago. This neighborhood is mostly made up of houses with families like myself. And this will be like putting a big apartment down in the middle of a neighborhood. When I moved here, there was no talk about bringing a bunch of addicts and alcoholics to the neighborhood. And I have two children and as you can see, one on the way. And there's a playground right next door. So having a bunch of addicts and alcoholics running around the neighborhood will put those kids and my kids in danger. So please don't put my kids in danger and vote no to this intrusion on our neighborhood. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah Cunningham. I know it's been said before that there will be screening done for all of the people that attend the retreat house and such. But one of my main concerns is the location where it's at. It's been said like on the map that there is a park right there and there's a neighborhood. And it says, and they've like said before that they can't leave the premises. But my only concern is what if the kids on the playground or in the neighborhood leave and they can, they like to wander? What if they get on the premises? And it's not really been said like, the people, the retreatants can't maybe like talk with or, yeah, just talk with the kids. My only concern would be something bad could happen if the kids do get on the premises. Because it hasn't been said that they can't, there's a word that I'm missing, but I don't, interact, that's the word. That's like they can't interact with the kids. So yeah.
Hi, my name's Taylor Coaster. First of all, I think this is a great idea to have this addiction recovery center. I think the process they have set up is a great way to build a community between the people and the retreatants in the facility and the community around them. But I do have some concerns with the security considering there's only cameras. And yes, I understand that they are being watched and that they will be asked to leave if they are found leaving the facility at times where they're not given permission. But in case of an emergency or an episode, I am concerned on how they would handle it if there's no security guard on staff. Even like elementary schools today have like a cop at the, like on the premise and stuff. So I feel like the facility needs to consider maybe a guard or just a security officer. Like someone who's friendly enough that like fits into the facility, but someone to help monitor the situation in case of an emergency. Thank you.
If there are no further public comments, I would like to call for a roll call vote on this issue. Again, if you are in support of approving a special use permit, you can signify by saying aye or yea. And if you're not in support of this, you will signify by saying nay. With the secretary, do a roll call vote, please.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Uh, nay.
Nay.
Aye. What was the?
Three ayes and four nays.
Okay, alright, this does not pass. I'm sorry, Mr. Wes Beck. Try again. You can tell the Douglas's to try again next time. Yeah, at the end, at the end of the meeting, we'll, we'll let you know how the boards decided on these issues. The last issue we will be discussing and deciding is the approval of funding for Lynn County Peer Review Court.
Good afternoon. Colonel Stolkey and I are here with a proposal seeking funding for a peer review court. Essentially, a peer review court would be a court established by students between the age of twelve and seventeen years old that would be passing judgment on their peers. Also between age twelve and seventeen years old that have committed offenses, minor offenses that would essentially be equivalent to simple misdemeanor crimes. And then passing down sentencing on them based on a trial that was had. We are currently seeking twenty thousand dollars, or a little more than twenty thousand dollars to fund the program. And Colonel Stolkey will explain what the funding is needed for.
So the additional costs that would be incurred with a program like this, anytime that you're in the courthouse, which is a secure facility, we have to have deputy sheriffs that man the x-ray machine and the metal detector. And the cost for two deputies for three hours a week times fifty-two weeks a year is a little over eighteen thousand. Benefits come out to some small additional costs and then there's also some additional utility costs. The total cost for the program for the first year would be twenty thousand seventy-eight dollars and thirty-five cents.
Are there any questions from any of the board members about this topic?
Yeah, I think I have a question. So you say like there'll be twenty thousand or a little bit more. What do you mean by a little bit more?
Oh, the total is twenty thousand seventy-eight dollars and thirty-five cents.
So which means there's a chance of money for going up or going down. Is that what you're trying to say? Because right here you say for the first year, and also she say like it'd be twenty thousand or a little bit more. So like, what's your stand on the amount?
Well, our total request is that, is that twenty thousand seventy-eight dollars thirty-five cents, which we anticipate will pay for the program for the first year.
And it's likely going to increase every single year to keep up with inflation and salary increases and whatnot. But base is twenty thousand seventy-eight.
So I understand from the meeting that we had earlier that some of the benefits of this program include that the misdemeanor or the whatever was, would be, not be on their permanent record, correct?
That is correct.
And they would be judged by their peers, so people within the same age group within, is this all within Lynn County?
It is.
Okay, so not necessarily from their school?
Not necessarily. The potential for that is obviously possible because all of the schools in the Lynn County District would be participating. But the jury would not be designated from the school of the offender, correct?
Okay.
I wanna speak on that because, is there a way to regulate where every student is from in each court? Because say, like you're saying that this is gonna be an application process. And say you have thirty students from Jefferson High School, you have five students from Winmar, and you have one student from, let's say like Center Point Urbana. Now you're putting together a court with more students from one school than the other, reviewing a student that could be from a school that has more students than the other schools. So I know this is a court, so you have to judge by like what is in front of you based on like just that, disregarding any other factors that go into play. But how are you gonna make sure that every single area from Lynn County is represented in these courts and that everyone can have a fair chance at trial in this?
So arguably, those same type of questions are asked of the adult criminal justice system. And one of the foundational principles is the randomness of it opposed to handpicking and cherry picking the jury panels. The voluntariness of the students participating in that, I would assume that their names just kind of go into a pool. And the requisite number of jury panelists are drawn for any specific day. Because there are gonna be multiple hearings or trials held on a specific day, we can't guarantee where the offenders are coming from either. So if you designated an entire jury panel with students from Wash and we had six different defendants, there'd be no way to say definitively that they would be fair for all of the defendants either. So keeping it random, I think ensures the closest chance we get is fairness in a jury of your peers. But still, jury of your peers are people who live in our community and are of the same age group. So I think that we still accomplish the jury of our peers with the random selection of students.
So, oh, do you wanna go?
Yeah.
Go ahead, sorry.
Okay, so a lot of these kids might make like unfair, like actions towards these other kids. So how are you gonna keep it like fair? Because a lot of kids might be biased. So how are you gonna keep track of that?
So the jury that participates as part of the review, peer review court would still be supervised or overseen by a judge. So the jury is going to be making suggestions to a judge. And if reasonable, we would anticipate and expect the judge to follow that. If not, we would also anticipate and expect the judge to draw it in. So if a recommendation was given that was way outside of the box, I think Colonel Stolkey earlier in one of our groups gave an example of a one thousand community service hours for being caught with a cigarette and that that penalty was disproportionate to the crime, the judge would draw that back. Yeah.
Would the punishments vary based on the offender's economic status? Because as I said early in the meeting, a kid whose family makes twenty thousand dollars a year and would get hit much harder by say a five hundred dollar fine for getting caught with alcohol on school would be much harder hit than a kid whose family makes half a million a year?
I think one of the benefits of the peer review court is that there is a wide range of sentencing considerations that can be passed down. One of the other jobs in the peer review court would be the attorneys who represent these defendants. And I would definitely argue that an attorney's job would be to explain to the jury any mitigating factor which would make one crime less beneficial than another. So two kids who are caught stealing, one with an affluent parent or a wealthy parent writing a check wouldn't teach that child a lesson and deter them from remaining in the criminal justice system. So maybe having that kid do community service or community project or working or a mandate that says your restitution has to be paid, but your parents can't pay it and you have to earn that through community service. There's a whole broad range of options for sentencing, but any mitigating factor would definitely and should definitely be considered by the jury to be presented by the child lawyers.
So if I may, you're asking for twenty thousand dollars here. And while I know that isn't in the grand scheme of things a whole lot of money, but this board is still gonna have to make a decision as to where that money comes from. Do you have a recommendation as to what department we should cut twenty K from to re-appropriate to this program?
I think that the program or department that is most closely related to our proposed program for peer review court would possibly be the juvenile detention center. One of the main goals of peer review court is interfering or intervening in the pipeline between juvenile justice and the juvenile detention center. So one of our hopes is that in implementing this program that we are freeing up beds or at least referring fewer kids to juvenile detention. So in reducing the budget for juvenile detention by twenty thousand dollars, we're thinking that the program, that they would see a twenty thousand dollar difference in the amount of fewer referrals.
So we don't, I don't see Don Schott, who is the head of our juvenile detention program here today. I wonder if our, do we have, is Don Gingerich here, our budget director? Yes, no? Oh, there she is. So Don, if you'll just jump up at the podium here. Because I think it would be helpful for the board to maybe have an understanding of maybe what their budget is. And to the best of your knowledge, as the county's budget director, could you help us understand what kind of impacts twenty thousand dollar cut right now to their budget would do?
Well, the total for all of those, the different programs, the alternative, the link, the detention program would be about three million. So if you were to take twenty thousand away from So if you were to take twenty thousand away from that program, it would most likely be the, um, additional cook that was just hired on the weekends, um, because the counselors were having to do the cooking themselves.
So we would be eliminating a position?
Right.
Okay, and we, um, how long ago did we hire this person?
Um, they would have been hired about six months ago.
Okay, so they've been on the job for six months. Because we had an influx of people and I think the point Colonel Stolkey and Monica you're making is that, um, they may not be seeing as many individuals if we can get a peer review court back up and running. But we'd obviously be handing this person who we just hired, um, a pink slip.
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any other questions from the board?
I, I have two questions. Um, so my first question is, uh, the people, the students involved in this, um, as offenders, would, they have to sign a waiver saying that they agree to do this and then you, you decide whether or not you accept them into this program, correct?
Yes and yes to both of those.
Okay. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Um, ultimately, the students that, or the offenders that would be participating in this program would have to meet minimum requirements being that they would waive their speedy trial rights. They would have to come into the program willing to admit to the offense and be willing to be sentenced by their peers. And then with an additional requirement that if and upon successful completion of their sentence, that they would then be participants and be acting jurors, um, and potential lawyers for future peer review courts going forward.
Okay, um, and my second question would be, what would be the most beneficial benefit and the most, and the worst disadvantage of this proposed program versus not funding it at all? So like what, what is the best and the worst about this program?
Um, I think that the best touches the community in different ways. You have students who are volunteering for a program and get, being given access to a criminal justice system that they may not otherwise have access to, becoming members of and taking an active role in. Um, in regard to the offenders that become a part of this program, I think the greatest gift that the program gives them is an opportunity to not have convictions on their record, even though those records are juveniles, uh, records, juvenile records still state with you. Um, this gives them an opportunity to hopefully have a dam put between them and a perpetuating cycle of crime. Um, we expect this program to be an intervention program to where we are trying to stop recidivism and prevent these kids from being repeat offenders and becoming constant and repeat faces in our criminal justice system. And we think that's what this program has to offer to our community.
In worst case scenario, we fund the program, we fire someone at juvenile justice, he's been on the job six months and we don't have those outcomes. That's the worst possible case scenario.
I think so.
Okay. Alright. Any other questions?
Actually, I, I have one. So how would you ensure an equal representation from the schools where like a smaller school like Center Point, if they had, you know, twenty kids come, then Lynn Mar had like five, then Lynn Mar's obviously a bigger school, that would not be equal representation of the, um, ideas before. So would it be like a quota system like that or?
I've never really considered that question before, but I think it could be addressed, um, in multiple ways. One is simple as, um, a percentage, you know, um, the amount of chairs or seats available on the peer review court could be, um, it could be directly related or correlated to your school's population and the overall population. Um, I don't, again, I haven't thought about that, but I don't think that would be too hard to accomplish. I think that if one school holds a certain percentage of the population, they could easily be given that many seats. Or just the names go in and random numbers come out and that would ensure, um, a fairness as well, so.
Thank you. Alright, so, uh, it looks like we are set to decide whether or not we are going to approve funding. And by approving funding, we will be taking twenty thousand dollars away from the budget for juvenile justice. Um, and, uh, juvenile justice, it looks like will have to, uh, figure out how to do without. And it seems like they'll be, uh, releasing someone from their employ. Or if you vote nay, um, we will not be funding, uh, this, uh, uh, request. So I would ask, um, for any public comment before we get to a vote? No public comment? Okay, I'd ask the secretary to call for a roll call vote.
Yea.
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 Emma?
Yea.
Bernard?
Aye.
Dana?
Yea.
Aye. And that one is unanimous. Congratulations on the peer review court. Alright, we have had ample opportunity for public comment, so if there's no further business before this board, we will adjourn. But before we let you go, um, I wanna do two quick things. If you gotta get out of here by three, feel free to dismiss yourself and take off.